Billie Allen.
At seven o'clock, Colorado Regular Meeting of the City Council here in Renz Pass, please.
We'd like to give you thanks for all the blessings you've posed upon us here. We give you thanks for our kids. We give you thanks for our health. We ask you to bless the ones that aren't feeling so well. We ask you to watch over all our loved ones that come in and out through Renz Pass. We ask you to bless all our guests that visit us each day. We ask you to watch over us and keep us in your heart. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
So bring us item 401 Building Board of Standards and Appeals.
Mayor and Council, at these, at this particular point, we have two members who are seeking reappointment to the Building Board Standards and Appeals. This is a board that oversees our demolition, oversees any variances to the building code, and gives recommendations to staff on any ordinance amendments. The terms that are expiring are General Benowitz, a Realtor, and Michael Moore, a commercial business owner. Both have expressed interest in being reappointed.
There hasn't been anybody else?
No, we have not received other applications.
Take questions from council?
No, sir.
I hear motion for approval for those two.
Well, I make a motion. We approve General Benowitz and Michael Moore to be reappointed to the Building Board of Standards and Appeals for a two-year term.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
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 Similar situation in the next item, which is Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a three-year term. We have terms expiring for Randall Fries, who at one point had served as a chairman and now is serving as a regular member. Cynthia Vasquez and Carol Salinas, they have all expressed interest in being reappointed.
No other applicants on this either, right?
No, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for approval for those three?
I make a motion that we reappoint Randall Fries, Cynthia Vasquez, and Carol Salinas.
Second.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This will bring us to item five, the consent agenda. All the following items are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. And if a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. You have items 5-1, which is ordinance 2016-41, 4163, ordinance 5-2, 2016, 4164. There's two more. Oh, I'm sorry. That brings us to 5-3, which is ordinance 2016, 4165, and approval of amendments for August 22nd, 5-4, 2016.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
That was Phillip and Vicki.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor. Under item 6.1, I declare a public hearing, open for the purposes of taking up the Renz Pass Municipal Development District budget for fiscal year 2016 to 2017. Is Terry Stansbury here? I don't see him.
No, we can, I can go over the budget.
Sylvia, you want to address it?
Yes. Mayor and Council, as you're aware, the Municipal Development District has a portion of sales tax that is allocated to it. There are a couple of projects at the MDD funds. One was the Aquatic Center and the other is the Civic Center. They receive sales tax and interest income of about $843,000. They do have debt obligation, debt service of $559,000 that is still paying the outstanding certificates of obligation at the Civic Center. They also contribute to the deficit, to the operating deficit of the Civic Center of approximately $250,000, which leaves an operating balance of $655.87 in the MDD budget.
Any questions or comments of council?
No.
Any members of the audience have any questions or comments regarding the MDD budget, proposed budget?
I have a question on, this is for next year, correct?
Correct.
They had allocated money already from this last, from this year's budget for the carpet replacement?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed.
I'm going to abstain from this vote because I sit on that board, just to let you know. What's the favor of the council on this item?
Well, I make a motion that we approve the resolution 2016-788 for MDD budget for 2016, 2017.
Aye, second.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
Next item is 6-2, and I declare a public hearing, open at this point for a, or to discuss the Renz Pass Crime Control and Prevention District budget fiscal year 2016 to 2017.
Mayor and Council, similar item, the crime prevention also receives sales tax income of approximately $807,000. The greatest portion of their expense goes to fund police services. This year, the proposed amount is 700, sorry, 697,000, which leaves a revenue account of $109,862. This fund is actually saving some money for a building fund. They would like at some point to be able to have a public safety building or similar. A great majority of their funding all goes to PD and PD-related activities.
Any questions or comments by council?
Listen.
Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments regarding the crime control prevention districts' proposed 2016, 2017 budget? Seeing none, then I declare this public hearing closed.
I hear most of our approval for item 60.
Will I make a motion that we approve the, the Renz Pass Crime Control and Prevention District budget for 2016, 2017?
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
Next item is a public hearing, which I declare open to take up the 2016 tax rate, seating tax rate.
Mayor and Council, this is a reiteration of our last three meetings. The proposed tax rate is the effective rate of .688655. It's as close to a flat, no increase rate as we could have with a several million dollar valuation decrease across the three counties.
Any questions or comments by council? As City Manager said, we've had two prior public hearings on this. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? If not, then this public hearing is closed.
I hear motion for approval for item 6-3B.
I make a motion that we approve the tax rate for 2016, 2017.
Second.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
Next is item 6-4, and I declare a public hearing, open on this particular item regarding the operating budget for fiscal, for the city operating budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017. Again, this is the third hearing we've had on this.
Mayor and Council, the changes, the relative changes to the annual budget this year from prior years are, number one, the proposal for the 3% of the general fund to be kept in reserve, which that's accounted for in the, in the general fund budget. Again, highlights are just increased staffed cost and trying to continue to do what we can do in-house, maintain the tax rate, and continue to plan for projected growth in the area. It is a balanced budget that has been submitted. Revenues totally $9.85 million and expenses totally $9.835.
Any questions or comments by council?
I've got a question. Sylvia, are we, by chance, are you getting a raise out of this, or?
No, sir.
Just want to make sure we get that out.
No, sir. And actually, very few staff are receiving any staff increases. What we have incorporated are performance bonuses in $50 increments in some departments. So there is no substantive salary increase. They've gone from about $750 an hour when I got here to $1115 an hour. So we're working with what we have.
Anything else from council? Any members of the public have any questions or comments regarding the operating budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017? If not, then the public hearing is closed.
Item 6-4B, I hear motion for approval.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the annual budget for the city of Renz Pass for 2016, 2017.
Aye, second.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
Sylvia, rest.
It's going really quickly. The next item is a request from Destination Downtown 501C3 Corporation to close a portion of Houston Street in order to have a Sea of Treasures rummage sale on November the 5th to coincide with first Saturdays of the month. If you aren't aware, the first Saturday of every month is dedicated to the merchants downtown, bring their wares out. There's a celebration, there's free food. Everybody provides a little something to promote the businesses. They're trying to gear up for events every quarter and this would be their first major event.
So, do you know if every quarter they're going to want a road closure?
It may not be. The
This is just their big
This is just one of their big events, yes.
Okay. Do I hear approval for item 7-1?
Yeah, I make a motion. We approve closing Houston between Wilson and Goodnight on November 5, 2016, for the Sea of Treasures rummage sale.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
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 7-2, Sylvia.
The next item is, one, an introduction of Amber, our staff accountant, who is in the audience. And also, I'm requesting council action to remove Donna Cox as signatory of the city's authority on several of the bank accounts.
The Lisa's with the three including her, right?
Correct. Correct. We are actively, we are Amber. We are, Amber's a local graduate, has an accounting degree. We are actively recruiting for the finance director position.
And this puts Amber as the signatory to this?
Temporarily, yes.
Okay.
Well, I make a motion that we add Amber.
Ibarra.
Ibarra, I'm trying to see her name on here. Okay. And, oh, there it is down there. Is temporary, is, you know, signatory authority and remove Donna Cox from the, from the account, the signatory and the accounts of the city.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And this will bring us to, 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 nine ones?
I'll do this one for none that can do the infrastructure here in just a second. The, this is a request for reimbursement monies from the drainage district. As you're aware, every resident in Renz Pass pays a drainage district fee. This is an amount that we receive back from the drainage district for maintaining our own ditches or making the attempt to.
Would this be the first time that we request funds?
This would be the second time. The first time was an amount over $300,000 a few years ago that we used for summer repairs and a purchase of a piece of equipment.
And is that what we're going to do with this, $88,000?
It'll go into, it'll go into streets and drainage. It'll be used for operations expense.
Okay.
This is something that should happen every year as part of the regular budget because it is a reimbursement coming in. And if we don't request it, it just sits over there.
Do you know about how much the city, that we contribute to the Do you know about how much the city, that we contribute to the budget?
You pay 50 cents, I believe. Every resident pays about $100 on their property tax bill. This is only a portion of it comes back to the city. The Drainage District keeps a portion.
Any other questions from council? Do I hear a motion for approval for item 9-1?
I make a motion, we approve item 9-1.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
Good evening, council members. This next change order is for the North 13th Street work. We've been fixing up our infrastructure. Y'all noticed this last rain event, we didn't have any flooding on 13th Street. The storm has been repaired with one gradient left. The change order will be to do the sewer. We have an old clay pipe there and brick manholes, and before we go in and pave the street, it is wise to fix substances in the center of the road. This also includes an old clay pipe or asbestos water line that runs under the road that will be replaced too. So this will be a section of water pipe, and then the sewer, there are three manholes. They'll be upgraded to SDR 26, and then the manholes will be fiberglass.
And then that road will be complete?
That'll be completed, then we can go and pave it.
Good.
And we're moving it right to the, we're not putting the water lines in the middle of the road?
The water line's already on the side, it just crosses the street. The sewer, we cannot move because we don't have enough space in the sides, you know, we have electrical, fiber optics, and the water line. So that's why we want to replace it now before we go and pave it.
Okay.
What would be the estimated time to finish all that?
It would probably be about a month to get in there and get it done. It's not a very deep, lines about five to six feet, so it should move pretty quick.
Thank you, sir.
That brings the total for the entire 13th Street reconstruction to a little under half a million dollars, so.
And that's just one street? It's just amazing how it's...
That's just one street.
How expensive it is, yes.
Do I hear a motion for approval for item 2-19?
I make a motion that we approve change order number one for North 13th Street Infrastructure.
Second.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
9-3.
You're up again, Fernando.
This next item is, at our Public Works Service Center, we added a manufactured building to, for the administrative offices and for a conference room. Currently, we're using an aluminum staircase that came with the building. We're really not in compliance with ADA, and being that we host meetings there with contractors and developers, we need to bring it up to par. We have a quote right now to do the work for 14,000. We do have it in our budget to do it this fiscal year, and we just wanted to get proper approval from the council.
Any other questions for council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion for approval for item 9-3?
Well, I make a motion that we approve the construction of the new ramp and canopy for Public Works not to exceed $14,000.
I second.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
Do I have anything on public safety or anything? I do want to bring up something that was brought to my attention on my way into work. So one of our officers, Mr. Prado, did an excellent job doing a service call at somebody's house. I told Mr. Blanchard about it, and we appreciate not only his work, but all the work of all our public officials. When you're out there, you know, you not only represent yourself, but you represent Ranza's Pass, and it's always nice to hear positive notes when it comes back. So thank you to your crew, the works we do, thanks to all the works we're here to do, appreciate it, thank you all. And if that's not done, that's going to bring us to item 13, which will be our citizen comments. The floor is now open at 7:22. You have a, the open mic. Who wants to come up first? Nope. Okay.
My name is Rosemary, and I represent the Ranza's Pass Chamber of Commerce, but I also sit on the committee for the Wounded Warrior Fan Club, and I just wanted to tell y'all thank you for supporting that event this weekend. It was amazing. We probably had, we haven't had our, our meeting, our debriefing yet, but we had at least 4,500 people come through there. I don't know what we would have done if we wouldn't have been able to get out on strip parade grounds because we were clearly way over the expectation that we thought we would have. I know the food trucks were a big part of that, and those are of attraction in themselves, and so I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of that group.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Is there anybody else who would like to make a citizen comment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Councilman Sam DeLeon. I was just coming by, because I had two concerns, and I wanted to do some little volunteer work for the city if they allow me to do it. First of all, I'm going to talk about the volunteer work. I do a lot of construction work around Port Aran, Zingle Side, Ranza's Pass, and our, in front of our city, all looks pretty tacky there, you know? Lines aren't painted. I was going to volunteer our time on Saturday and Sunday, if y'all don't mind, to paint all the lines around the building and clean up the parking lot. So it looked a little decent. I go to the other town, it looks nice out there, you know? But they told me I had to ask permission from the council before we do that.
Sylvia, who?
Happy to have him help, he just has to sign a hold harmless that if he slips and falls, he's not going to sue the city.
I sure will, and I'm insured, so.
I appreciate that, sir.
And I got another concern. My concern is, you know, the police department, when they pull a car, a car over, I almost got into an accident the other day right here, came over the office, I seen the car number, they pulled a car over, they pulled them over right in the middle of the road. I think they had to pull them over and make them get off the road because the car that was beside me wasn't paying attention, I don't know what they were doing, and he pulled into my lane at the last minute because father caught pulling on the side of the road and made me go into the next lane, almost causing an accident. I think, you know, my concern is the officers, you know, is when they pull a car over, maybe they ought to have them pull into a parking lot or on, off the road instead of on the road. I've seen that several times. And another concern I have is, I don't know, like, city trucks, city cars, if they're covered under insurance, like, you know, if they have a personal person in the car? Because the other day I almost got hit by a city truck. It was about eight o'clock in the afternoon, they, this road right here, they got a stop sign in the wrong place right where it's a yield sign. It ought to be a stop sign instead of a yield sign because the city truck went right past and never saw me when I was hitting. It was around eight o'clock in the afternoon, and I know that the person who was with them, it was like four people in the car, I know they weren't no city employees. Now, if that truck has an accident, who's going to cover the people that are in the truck that are not city employees?
Did you get a vehicle number?
Uh, no, I didn't.
Name of the person driving the vehicle?
Well, I mean, I don't know, it was a city, I didn't pull them over, you know? I'm just saying he passed the stop, the yield sign is right here.
I thought, I thought I heard you say you recognized who it was.
No, no. I said I didn't know who it was, you know, so, I mean, it was around eight o'clock in the afternoon.
There was about four people in it?
There was like four people in the truck. It was a truck, a white truck, yes, sir. I mean, my concern is...
What date was that?
Even if it's a police, I want to say it was either a Friday or Saturday.
This past week?
Yes, I think it was Friday, that was one of the football games. But my, you know, I mean, saying, you know, even an officer car, you know? If he's got somebody in there, he gets called for an emergency, if there's somebody in the car that, you know, it's not a, an officer, if something happens, who's liable, was the city liable, or is, you know, the person that's in the car, I mean, you know? That's just my concern.
I think if they're an explorer or something, they're, they're covered, right? You know, it's somebody riding with an officer or something.
Well, yeah, we, we have ride along program, they sign that, condemn any cause and stuff like that.
But this sounds like another city employee, not a policeman.
Not a police officer.
No, not a police officer I'm talking about. I mean, I'm not trying to point anybody out, but like, I see people dropping their kids off of school in city cars or stuff like that, and, and, I mean, I don't, I mean, to me, I don't think, I mean, if something happens, is the city going to have to pay for that person in that car that's injured, or, you know, what's going to happen, you know what I'm saying? That's my concern.
I don't think we have any hold harmless waivers, right?
No, there, there is no hold harmless for taking your kid to school and then...
Thank you, Sammy, I appreciate it.
All right, sir, thank you.
And thank you for volunteering to help us out.
And will you start the work? I'm just kidding.
Saturday morning, so they don't have a car parked up front.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Sarah.
Well, I'm going to put you in touch with John Gomez, who's our maintenance person, so you guys can coordinate that.
Is there anybody else who would like to make a citizen comment? If not, then we'll close the session at 7:27 PM. And this is going to bring us to item 14 of the executive session. The City Council will resume its executive session to discuss the following items pursuant to chapter 551 of Texas Governor Code. At 7:26 PM, item 551.071, consultation with the city attorney over seagrass mitigation. Item 14-B, 551.074, will be personal matters with the city secretary. Like I said, 7:26, we'll be out soon as we can. If you're not here, thank you for coming out.